Next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at CM Carnegie Hall in our town. I shouldn't. Instead, planning staff can apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present, written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Regularly, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item by first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the planning commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the planning commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on channel sixteen and will be rebroadcast Saturday at ten a.m., Tuesday at seven p.m., and Wednesday at seven.
Good evening. Welcome to Carnegie Hall. I would like to start with the consent agenda. Item number one being the approval of the March seventh, twelve, twenty-twelve minutes. Item two being Platts. Item three being a rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RS II and RD Residential District to allow residential development at West Seventy-seventh Street and South Beal Avenue. Number four would be a major amendment to subareas A through E of the Village at Sycamore and Fifty-seventh Street Plan Development District to amend subarea regulation and boundaries at the southwest corner of East Fifty-seventh Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Number five would be a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to construct a four-unit residential building at sixty-eight oh eight South Whiskey Avenue. Number six, a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to construct a four-unit residential building at East Seventy-third Street and Eldorado Avenue. Number seven would be a conditional use permit in the C three Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at five twenty-four North Main Avenue. Number eight would be a final development plan in Subarea B of the Interstate Crossing Business Park to construct a recreation business facility at South Solberg Avenue and West Fifty-eighth Street. Item nine would be a final development plan in Subarea E of the Granite Valley Plan Development District to construct a warehouse office building at East Dyke Drive. Number ten would be a final development plan in the Subarea E of the Marion Place Plan Development District to allow construction of a convenience store at the southwest corner of West Twenty-sixth Street and South Edna Avenue. Number eleven would be a preliminary subdivision plan for the Whispering Woods Edition Phase Two to develop a residential subdivision at East Fifty-seventh Street and South Southeastern Would there be any objections in the audience regarding the items on the consent agenda? Would there be any objections from anyone on the planning commission in regards to the consent agenda?
No, but I just want to make sure. I can't imagine all these people are here to support something on a consent agenda, so.
Mr. Chair, my name is Dave Loveland. I'm with the City Office. I'd like to, there's a couple of things I want to point out. Item number nine on the consent agenda, we received a request to include lot fourteen in the legal description of that item. If the commission is favorable to that, then we would need you to amend the consent agenda by, to include lot fourteen on the legal. Additionally, what I wanted to state for everybody in the audience and everybody watching on TV tonight is that the planning commission's role specifically is on land use and zoning matters and will consider the city's adopted policies through the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So, any discussion should pertain along those lines and city staff is available to answer any questions while we go through the items tonight.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. I think what we then need is a motion to amend item number nine to include lots twelve through fourteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to extend the back consent agenda, amending item nine. Amending item nine to include lots twelve through legal description. Amending item nine legal description to include lot twelve through fourteen, lot on Granite Valley.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We have now concluded with the consent agenda items. If you were here for the consent agenda and your item has been addressed, you're certainly We will now move to the regular agenda with item number twelve.
Do we need to approve the regular agenda first?
Oh, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the regular agenda, move the deferring items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen to the next meeting, planning commission meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, what we just did there is we had one, two, three. We've had three items at this meeting at the five-thirty meeting. I think what we had just addressed was items planned for the seven o'clock meeting.
Items one through eleven are now approved. We will be addressing items twelve and thirteen beginning right now. And then items fourteen and fifteen will begin at seven p.m.
And I want to thank the folks that came for the consent agenda and the regular agenda at five-thirty versus seven o'clock. David, the first thing on our agenda is item number twelve, which is a conditional use permit in the C two General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle repair at twenty-one ten West Burnside.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. Again, my name is David Loveland, and I'll be representing planning staff on this and additional items. Project is for Bob's Cycle Repair. The applicant is Robert Anderson. The request is to allow motor vehicles repair at twenty-one ten West Burnside. Abutting zoning and land uses are storage units to the north, office to the south, storage and warehouse to the east, and muffler repair to the west. All of those rank as a compatibility rating of five. Again, in two thousand and four, the Board of Adjustment granted a variance allowing a reduction in the required number of parking stalls for the overall business center site. The total required is thirty-four, and this application does not increase that requirement. The applicant is requesting approval of the motor vehicle repair at this location. As stated, all repair will take place indoors with no unscreened storage outside. The land use is appropriate and will have minimal impact on surrounding properties. As such, planning staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and we've received one call in regards to this item, and it was in curious in nature and not in opposition.
Thank you, David. Anything more to add to that? Would there be any questions of David for many of the commissioners? If not, would the petitioner? You'd identify yourself, sir.
Robert Anderson.
Okay. Robert, this is your opportunity to tell us anything else that you'd like us to know concerning this item.
I guess I picked this location because it previously had been a shop in the future. It's pretty much ideal for what I'm going to be repairing, and it's kind of in the same neighborhood where I'm at already, and I guess, I don't know, that's about it.
Thank you. Would there be any questions for Bob? If not, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number twelve? If not, would entertain commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item twelve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would there be any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. We'll move on to item number thirteen. Thirteen is a conditional use permit in the C two General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at forty-sixth West Twelfth Street.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. The project name is for Synthetic Warehouse. The applicant is Chesley Kane. The area in size of the lot is just under one acre. Abutting zoning and land uses to the north is a warehouse in the I two Heavy Industrial District. To the south is a campground across West Twelfth Street. To the east is bacon and motor vehicle sales, and to the west is a convenience store. Compatibility rating of four was assigned due to its proximity to the Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Your conditional use permit standard is available within your staff report. The application and land use conforms to the city's adopted codes and will have minimal effect on surrounding property owners. This is a motorcycle display and sales location. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by Building Services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of this item. We've received no phone calls on this item, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Would there be any questions of David? Thank you. Would the petitioner please come forward?
Hello. Yeah, my name is Ches Kane and owner of the Synthetic Warehouse.
Is there anything else you would like to share with the planning commission?
At this time, it's just, we'll be selling between six and twelve motorcycles at a time, so it'll be a pretty small restraint type of a situation there.
Hang on just a second. We'll ask the commission. Would anyone have any questions of Ches? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address item number thirteen? If not, I would look for commission action regarding number thirteen.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of item fourteen.
We have a motion for approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Would there be any discussion regarding item number thirteen?
Thirteen.
If not, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that being motion for second on this break. Wow, I'm being reprimanded, everyone. We need a motion. We're going to break this meeting up, start this again at seven o'clock.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for the planning commission to break until seven p.m.
We have a motion to break until seven o'clock. Would there be a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We're in recess till seven o'clock.
Item fourteen, fifteen, the last two items. So if you're here for anything else, please come see me. Otherwise, fourteen, fifteen will be here at seven o'clock. Thank you.
No, there was supposed to be, I thought we were having two meetings.
I said, yeah, I said fourteen, I meant thirteen. He just went right over the top of me.
With nothing?
I always try to skip thirteen. I'm a superstitious guy. We could have started this meeting at six o'clock, got done at six thirty.
to consent and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. Any actions taken tonight on final development plan, design, review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at seven, here at Carnegie Hall. commission the following criteria. First, request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item by first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the planning commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the planning commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on channel sixteen and will be rebroadcast Saturday at ten a.m., Tuesday at seven p.m., and Wednesday at seven. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Carnegie Hall. We've got a rather large crowd this evening, and I would like to take just a couple of minutes to tell you what we've done so far tonight and how we're going to kind of progress through this meeting. Because of anticipation of a lot of people tonight, we've broken our meeting up in two parts. We had our first meeting at five-thirty. We had a number of consent agenda items, a couple of regular agenda items, and we've done that earlier. We've recessed till this particular meeting here at seven. We have two items we're going to deal with tonight. I would ask everybody to double-check their cellphones, make sure that they're on silent or off. Our guideline would call for a time period of about forty-five minutes to deal with any one particular item. We're going to increase that tonight to, we're going to kind of aim for an hour worth of discussion. We ask the folks that come forward to address us for five minutes, and that's not to limit anyone's conversation or opinion. That's to accommodate as many people as we can and to get as much information as we can, from as many people as we can. The five minutes would be your opportunity to make your presentation. We might have questions in the commission at that point, which would not include that five minutes, so it could run a little bit extra for any one particular speaker. But the presentation time, we hope, would be five minutes or less. We kind of get it. We know there's a fair amount of concern here. We're hoping that the speakers can bring new and important information to us, and we'd like to give as many people as we can that opportunity to bring new issues to the table for us. When the discussion is done, I will ask for a motion from one of the commissioners. We'll second that. That is a time that we then have discussion. And at discussion level, that eliminates any more public comment at that time. However, as a commission, we can ask staff back up to answer more questions. We can ask petitioner back up, and we can ask you as citizens back up. What, as we go through there, some of you might have questions. What I'm going to ask the commissioners to help me record those questions so that we can maybe follow up with some of those questions when we get to that discussion period. I hope that gives everybody a little sense of how we're going to do this this evening. And that being said, I would entertain a motion to reconvene our planning commission meeting.
So moved. I'll make a motion to convene the regular portion of the planning commission.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We will continue on with our meeting. We will go to item number fourteen, which is a final development plan in Subarea B of the Prairie Hills North Plan Development District to allow construction of a truck wash at East Granite Lane, north of Sixtieth Street North. David?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is David Loveland, and I'm representing staff on this item. The item before you is a request to develop a truck wash on East Granite Lane. You've seen a related item several months ago in order to establish the zoning parameter. The area of the site in question is just over three acres in size. Abutting zoning and land uses to the north, Subarea D of the Prairie Hills North Plan Development District, which is allotted for future office development. To the south is Prairie, Subarea B of the same PD, which is future commercial and industrial. To the east is Subarea B of the Flagstone PD, which allows for future commercial development. And to the west is Subarea B of the Prairie Hills North, which is a truck stop. Compatibility rating has been assigned a four. There's some minor conflict potential due to the proximity of the rural subdivision to the northeast. The Prairie Hills North Plan Development District was created in November of nineteen ninety-four by the Minnehaha County Commission to allow residential, commercial, and office uses. The land area encompassed by the Plan Development District was then annexed into the city of Sioux Falls in June of nineteen ninety-eight. Subsequently, a major amendment revised Subarea Locations, Boundaries, and Regulations, revising Subarea Locations, Boundaries, and Regulations was approved by the City Council in nineteen ninety-nine to allow for a truck stop and associated land uses. Other applications associated with the Flying J Travel Plaza have been received and approved since the initial amendment. The Planning Commission and City Council approved a major amendment in the fall of twenty-eleven in order to allow a truck wash with the understanding that a final development plan must be approved by the planning commission. And that is the application before you this evening. Again, the location is East Granite Lane, north of Sixtieth Street North. Sixtieth Street North is a limited access arterial with defined access points, and access directly to the site is from Granite Lane. There are no parks, open space, or schools within six hundred feet of the subject property. The building is centered on the east portion of the lot, allowing for turning radii to enter the wash. Building exterior will utilize a combination of precast concrete wall panels, hardy-lap siding, and brick veneer. The roof will be pre-finished metal seam roofing. The color scheme was not indicated. The applicants have provided twelve trees on site, meeting minimum city standards. In addition, a landscape buffer will be installed on the lot to the north along that east property line. The applicant's proposal to construct a truck wash is consistent with the corridor development pattern of this area. Minor conflict potential lies with rural subdivision to the north, and the applicants have provided for landscape buffering on the property to the north. The applicants may also want to consider extending that landscape buffer along the north property line as well as the east line. A truck stop wasn't allowed use on this property prior to the major amendment being approved in the fall of two thousand and eleven. The applicant requested the major amendment in order to clarify the allowed uses to include a standalone truck wash, and the proposal was approved by both the planning commission and city council. During that process, the applicants met with the neighboring property owners and have formulated some of the final development plan to address the concerns presented at that time. Because the subject's application conforms to the intent of the Plan Development District regulations and has provided site design and landscaping to reduce the impact to surrounding properties, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with one condition, and that being the landscape buffer on the lot to the north be installed as per the plan presented. We have received a couple of phone calls on this item. I believe there's one person or more in the audience that wishes to address you on it. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Commission, would there be any questions of David? If not, is the petitioner here?
Paul Reynolds with RCM Services, sixty-eight oh nine South Minnesota Avenue. We got the report back from the planning commission, and we've gone through it. Recommendation on the landscaping buffer and those particular items. We're going to comply with what the planning commission has said and what the city engineering departments and staff has recommended for us on the wash, according to the documents. So, with that, is there any questions from the board?
Commission, would there be any questions of Paul? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Would there be anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number fourteen?
I simply, I'm John Lavender at fifty-four oh nine North Castle Drive out in Skyline. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association. We have, at this point in time, only one suggestion, and I plead that the planning commission would help us out on this. And I understand the staff. commission would help us out on this, and I, and I understand the staff is really encouraging what I am going to ask. The buffer, that is trees and what have you, berm, that is north of the developed building and grounds, we, I want it to go east and west across the top. I live just two houses north of there, and, and what that buffer will do, that will help cut down noise and any other form of ground pollution. So I'm asking you, whatever the, whatever your tool to do this with is to make the developer show in concrete that he will plant and build the appropriate berm across the top, not just north and south is there. And I, I am guessing, don't call it, I tried to cut off, he, I think he's in agreement with that as well, but I would like to know that that doesn't just get a gentleman's understanding that somebody says, "This is what you approve," and it is, it was noticeably on this, oh, one of this document of, of where we noticed that we need to have that solved. That's it. If you can help me, thank you.
John, before you sit down, have you had a chance to talk with Paul in regards to your request?
No, I have not had that opportunity, and I didn't think that was available necessarily to me, but I am assuming that from just a general gesture that he's in agreement with that, and that he will so kindly submit to you some type of redrawing. I don't worry about it.
Well, hang on, John. We'll, we'll call John back up, or we'll call Paul back up in a minute.
That's how you do it. Thanks. It's all right.
Any other questions for John? Just a second, John.
Yes. John, do you have any concept of how long, I guess that's the word, east and west that that buffer should be to kind of satisfy the concerns that you have?
If it went across no less than halfway, because going all the way over to granite probably is not as necessary with the actual position of where the truck wash will be, but at least halfway, I think, will be a benefit to us.
In terms of feet, what, what do you think that would be?
I, I need help on that. I, I'm not, I don't have a scale and...
Can you read it? Can you help me, Dave? Thanks.
It doesn't have to be exact, but somewhere, so we have a concept of how large this additional buffer might be.
David, are your eyes good enough to see that small print on that?
I would hesitate to, right at this moment, to try and give you a definitive number of feet. I, I think probably if that's something that you wanted to consider, you could say halfway across the property line of the existing, of the subject property. I don't want to get into an exact feet because I can't read that as well as I should be able to in order to do that.
You think you can't read it? You ought to be me.
Any other questions for John, anyone? John, thank you. Good job. Was there anyone else here that would like to address item number 14? If not, Paul, would you mind coming back up? Paul, I think John is asking us to perhaps put in additional stipulation on this approval to, for that north, I think probably halfway. Is that an unreasonable request, in your opinion?
We can actually take a look at the landscaping plan that we have, and it's, it's basically a berm that we have on the plan right now with clustering of trees. We could adjust how that clustering is, and like the lower cluster that you see there, I mean, if we spaced the trees out appropriately, we should probably be able to pull them right around that north end, north section of that property and carry it over probably to that point to halfway or somewhere in that vicinity. The one thing is, is right where the trees end right now is actually the back corner line of that residential development that's there. I think there's an aerial view. If you take a look at the back corner that we're looking at, is right at the back corner where that yard is. So that adjoining property that is actually to the north of that, I'm not sure what that is currently zoned right now. Is that for office, or I, I believe that's additional commercial property that's there that would be directly north of what that tree line would be. But again, your original question is, is we could adjust our landscaping plan according to trees that we have, and we could move those clusters, and we can move some of them to the north.
What do you feel would be reasonable to you, Paul?
We could just work with the planning commission and the zoning department, and we would resubmit a new landscaping plan showing that, and then we could also provide that to John. That wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Paul?
Thank you.
Would you come back up, John? John, does that sound reasonable to you if, to, if he were to...
Very reasonable. That's, that accomplishes what I think we...
Do you see his point there about where your residential property ends and the property starts to the west?
Exactly. Now, that bottom corner unit is a rental unit, and then the guy, the next one up is, we don't give out personal information, but is my neighbor, and the next house is me. And so by that rearrangement, this would give us more protection, and I think that's satisfactory. So thank you very much if you get that done.
Well, we'll see here in a minute. David, would you mind stepping up for a second? If we, of a motion with a stipulation to resubmit the landscaping plan for staff review and approval, is that something that would not be out of the ordinary and unreasonable?
You've done that in the past with other...
Thinking that we have?
You've given final approval authority to the planning director or designee then, to approve a landscape plan, so you can certainly do that.
What would be a reasonable time for that to be delivered to you?
Well, usually it's, you know, before they want a building permit that they submit all their documents.
Before they want a building permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, David. Anyone else here that would like to address item number 14? If not, I'd look for commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval with the stipulation that the final landscape plan is approved by the director or his designee.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second discussion.
It doesn't seem unreasonable to me, and, I mean, seems like it solves everybody's problem, everybody goes away happy.
I would concur, Nick, and again, this is an item that has come between us before or before us before, and we appreciate that the neighborhood has been actively involved in Paul. We certainly appreciate the effort that you have made in working with the neighbors. So I, for their sake as well as for yours, they'll probably be glad when it gets underway.
We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We will now turn to item number 15, which is a rezone from the old office district to the C4 planned commercial district and C recreation conservation district for allowed uses at the northeast corner of 69th Street and South Cliff Avenue. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name is Steve Randall, representing planning staff this evening on this item. And before I get started here, you do have an addendum that includes a number of items. There's some letters that have been circulated regarding the petition. There's also some petitions that have been signed by people in opposition to the request. Those are included in the addendum, and I'll refer to those in the staff report. I'll try to limit our presentation to five minutes and get started with this. I'd like to make a presentation that kind of summarizes the history of the project, that is, the land and the uses that are allowed on the proj, on the land as we go back a few years to when the land was agricultural and a future land use plan indicated that it was multifamily uses that would be developed in the future. There was a future land use amendment that was proposed and approved by the planning commission and the city council at that time that allowed it to change from multifamily residential to commercial, along with some office development on the subject property. That continued for some time until the landowner determined that the market conditions and demand for use of the property would require a rezoning. They submitted a rezoning request that changed the zoning on the property from agricultural to commercial and office, and those are indicated on the exhibit overhead for the audience and on your monitors, I believe. The C4 planned commercial zoning is intended to provide for well-designed commercial areas primarily in developing areas and along major arterial streets and sensitive areas. Now, that's the current zoning definition for C4 planned commercial. Uses shall generally be intensive retail, general merchandise, and other commercial uses of similar character, and outdoor storage is not allowed. There are a number of uses that are allowed in the C4 planned commercial. Retail trade and services subject to the parcel containing one acre of land or less, and a building containing 15,000 square foot of area or less, or a conditional use permit is required. That option is available to us and to any developer of the property. Similarly, a permitted special use is off-sale alcohol, subject to such use not being located within 500 feet of an elementary or secondary school, measured from the closest point of the outside wall of the building or tenant space to the closest point of the school property line, or a conditional use permit is required, and that option is also available for the property. Conditional uses, of course, are allowed by conditional use. That requires a public hearing with you, the planning commission, and approval with conditions that can affect the impact of such uses on the neighborhood. The applicant has provided a concept for development of the property, and the applicant is Walmart. They've indicated a store location with property developed for parking. They, in the process of proposing this concept plan, have determined that it was necessary to rezone the office portion of the property to commercial at the northwest corner, which is less than an acre or about an acre, and they propose to develop the eastern portion of the office zoning to deal with drainage problems in the area. The drainage solution that they've run through, planning staff and with the city public works, shows that the drainage improvements will take care of more than what's required by the site. In fact, it reduces the impact of overall drainage in the neighborhood. The land use and transition of that zoning in the upper left-hand corner of the property was established to be a transition into a low-density residential neighborhood to the northwest. At that time, the neighborhood was very involved in establishing that zoning district. The applicant is proposing to use that for parking. The city advised the applicant that that could not be used for parking unless it were rezoned to C4 commercial, to allow that to be considered in a conditional use plan. The applicant then requested the rezoning. Staff feels that a transition into the neighborhood can be established through the conditional use permit process and is supportive of the rezoning. The city planning commission, of course, is an advisory body to the city council. Your recommendation this evening to the city council would be to approve or deny the rezoning, not the project. And so that is the recommendation of staff. We find that the transition can be accommodated through the conditional use permit process, and all other uses proposed for development on the property can also be accommodated, accommodated through the conditional use process, and we recommend approval of the rezoning. Just to finish up, I think I'm close to the five minutes.
Dave was going to give me the signal. Well, you haven't seen it yet.
All right. What I've done here is, you have copies of the cover letter on the petitions that were signed in protest. All of the signatures are available in a packet that I have here with me this evening. If you needed to see those signatures, I can show them to you. Otherwise, they're on file, and I think, Jeff, you posted them to the website. Okay? They're also available to anybody else that wants to look at them. They're on the website. There were, on this petition that, excuse me, that was to the, from the Sioux Falls Christian, there were 335 signatures on that one, and on the other one, which was a general protest petition, there were 1,327, I believe. So that pretty much concludes staff report. I'm available to answer questions. We have others, staff here representing public works, city planning department, and the city attorney's office.
Would there, at this time, be any questions of Steve in regards to item number 15?
Steve, I have one question for you. You talked about the packet and all the people that have talked about being opposed to that. Did we get calls or any notifications of people that were in agreement or a proponent of this coming in?
We had one letter that was in supportive, in support. We had another letter that offered a recommendation for the conditional use process as far as dealing with the parking lot design, but I did not include those in your packet because they had to do more with the conditional use than the retention.
Good. Thanks.
Steve, I maybe misunderstood something. Did you say there's no outdoor storage allowed in C4?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's no outdoor storage allowed in the C4 district? And in an old district, is a retention pond allowed in an old district?
It is. It could be developed part of the project. However, if you keep the old office zoning without the conditional use permit, which ties a specific plan to development, that old office district could be developed for office. It could be a building and some parking and so on. But if it's rezoned to RC conservation, then, of course, the office development goes away, and the petitioner has indicated a concept of drainage improvements that would accommodate their needs as well as the needs of the neighborhood.
Steve, the issue before us tonight is not a conditional use permit. This is a rezone on the two parcels as shown on this map.
That's correct. Your recommendation to the city council is on the zoning only. The city council, if, as it would proceed tonight, either with a recommendation for approval or a recommendation for, would go to the council on May 7th. Excuse me? May 1st? I thought they changed that now. May 1st.
If, and if this were to pass, they would still have to come back for a conditional use permit.
That's correct. If it is approved by the city council, the applicant can apply for the conditional use. Actually, they can apply ahead of that, but the public hearing could not take place until after the city council has acted on it.
Okay. And this is not a final development plan tonight. The final development plan would come, would be the last step.
That's correct. The planning commission is in a position tonight to look at the land use and the zoning, to see whether it's appropriate for this location or not and make that recommendation.
Just clarification, would there be a final development plan, or would it end after the conditional use permit?
No. A conditional use permit would be the final action by this body.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. I wanted to be sure of that in my mind.
Mr. Jarrett, could you make it absolutely clear for myself?
Mr. Jarrett, could you make it absolutely clear for myself and the audience? If the commission tonight votes no to rezon, it does not prohibit the project from moving forward, correct?
It does not prohibit the application from moving forward to the City Council. Whether it's denial or approval, it's simply a recommendation by the Planning Commission to the Council. Council has the final decision on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? If not, thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Would the petitioner be here? Would you be good enough to say?
Yes, good evening. My name's Rick Rolfing. I am the project engineer with BFA, and our office is located in Washington, Missouri. And I'd like to say, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Also with us here this evening, in anticipation of multiple questions that may be requested of this board and also audience members, is Brian Cutting. He is Walmart Real Estate Manager. We also have five members of the Walmart Field Operations Team with us here this evening, as well as Patrick. He is a land use attorney with Boyce Greenfield Law Firm, right here in town. Jackie Cook Haxby with SAIC, she is the project architect. Jason Genstat of HDR is our traffic engineer. They are here from Sioux Falls as well. And lastly, Shane, he is also with my firm, BFA. He is a project designer. The project site total is approximately 17.2 acres in size, of which 13.9 acres is currently zoned C4, which is an appropriate zoning for Walmart use. The purpose of our petition this evening, as Steve mentioned, is to rezone the northwestern corner of the property from an office zone to C4 commercial, and also the eastern 2.65 acres to rezone it from office to a recreation conservation. A little bit about each of those pieces of property. As Steve mentioned, we are proposing a parking lot, an extension of our parking field on the northwest corner of the property, and that is all we are proposing on that. Parking lot is an approved use in office zoning, so it's nothing new to office zoning. It is an approved use in office zoning. However, in our meetings with staff, we were told that if it's an accessory parkering for the Walmart property and Walmart parking lot, it would have to be rezoned. So that's why we're before you on that piece this evening, to rezone it. Walmart has mentioned to staff, and we've been told that at this stage of our approvals, it can't be conditioned upon, but we are open to condition whenever deemed appropriate, that it will remain parking and/or only a use that is acceptable and permissible in an office zone district ever be developed on that piece of property. We're not trying to rezon it only to develop it as commercial later on. That's basically what I'm trying to say. As far as the 2.65 acre property, not to reiterate what Steve said, but we could easily fit our detention, our required detention, on a lot smaller piece of ground. A recently approved Hy-Vee property had about an acre back there on that 2.65 acre, and they actually had on the north side another lot for future development. After hearing many of the concerns and current issues with storm drainage in the area, we are ready to designate that as, to not be developed, but for a long-term drainage facility for improvements over the overall area for drainage. During our design process, we've had opportunities, several opportunities. We've met with staff. We have held a neighborhood meeting. We've also met with representatives at a separate meeting with the Sioux Falls Christian School. We've had phone conversations with Greg Schmidt of the Sioux Falls Police Department, conversations with Mark Bedidetto, and he is the president of the University of Sioux Falls. And we've also spoken with Patrick Anderson. He's an executive director of the Northern Prairie Land Trust, and he is in charge of the, oversees of the property that is east of our site, the large wetland area. From those meetings, we do want to say we appreciate everyone's input and the time they've put forth, and are grateful for those comments that we have received. And, believe me, me and my team and Walmart have spent many, many hours in going through those comments, what can be addressed, what can't be addressed, in trying to bring forth the best product and site that we can. As is typical of Walmart projects, and also in comments that we've received and from the meetings that we've had with the various agencies, we have prepared and have submitted to staff our preliminary plans, a traffic study, our stormwater drainage calculations for the site lighting photometrics, as well as building renderings at this point in our design process, in approval process. Again, we are here tonight for a rezoning request, but if I still have any time left in my five minutes, I would like to briefly speak on two of the items that were maybe most heard at each of our meetings that were concerns. And those two would be traffic and stormwater. Very briefly, HDR, again, is our traffic engineer. We selected them as they are very familiar with this intersection of 69th and Cliff. You may recall, they were the city's engineer for a corridor study back in 2009 that dealt with this very site. From that 2009 study, recommendations were made on the improvements to 69th and Cliff, and our site plan is very consistent with those recommendations made at that time. We have met with staff early on in the project to determine the scope of work and what intersections needed to be included in HDR's traffic engineering study. And within the study, we not only had the Walmart store as a use, but the outlot, that is at the southwest corner, 1.04 acres in size, was assumed to be a fast-food restaurant, which could be considered a worst-case scenario as far as traffic generation for the traffic model and traffic movements. The traffic study that HDR prepared has been submitted to city engineering staff. They have commented on it. We have revised the report to address their comments, and it, again, has been resubmitted to city staff, who I believe can comment on it tonight, but it's my understanding the city staff is in agreement with the projected traffic volumes that are portrayed in the report. Those projected traffic volumes, as this development with the Walmart and the outlot, are consistent with the anticipated or previously anticipated multi-use conceptual commercial layout that was done as part of maybe the 2009 study. And I might also add that the current layout of Walmart and the outlot as a fast-food restaurant, the traffic volumes are less than those volumes that were in the Hy-Vee traffic study that was, or should say, not necessarily traffic study. They are less than the Hy-Vee, than the volumes in the traffic study prepared for Hy-Vee in the Hy-Vee project that was recently approved. Couple other things on traffic. Traffic reductions of this Walmart may be compared to a few other Walmarts if you're driving out to those sites. This project does not have a TLE, a Tire Lube Express. That is where you can buy your tires or battery, and they will service your car with anything you can buy in the store right there in the garages at the store. We do not have that, therefore, less traffic with that gone. We also do not have an outdoor garden center, which in the springtime could also add some traffic. And lastly, this store does not have a drive-through pharmacy area that's being proposed. One other item on the traffic, Walmart will have approximately four to five large trucks, and these are all in the traffic study, and all of our anticipated trucks are in the study. Our traffic engineer can speak more to that about how those numbers are generated of what is projected. It's actually a study specific to South Dakota Walmarts, so it's a very good study. It's put together by DOT and used and accepted by DOT. Also, with the Walmart truck traffic, we do have no idle laws that we enforce ourselves. Therefore, if there's an overnight delivery of one of those four or five, or if it's late in the evening, that truck cannot sit there and idle for the remainder of the evening, even if they got there in the middle of the afternoon. They will simply drop off their full trailer, go over to an empty one that's at the dock, and they leave. There's no sitting at the site idling of their engines. The other main topic that we've heard discussions of, and again, Steve briefly mentioned, was stormwater concerns. We heard that the existing school parking lot to the southeast during heavy rainstorms frequently floods or does flood or has ponding water on it. With that, we did see an opportunity to increase our detention size and try to mitigate that as much as we could with our own site development. And to address this, the portion of the property, the rear or eastern 2.65 acres that we're proposing to rezone to RC, will entirely be developed to remain as open space or for a stormwater detention facility and associated improvements. Just real quickly, the Walmart site, yes, it is going to be impervious. Today, it's a field, so yes, that means a faster runoff rate. We are actually holding the 100-year developed storm in our basin such that it will release less at a less rate than the existing, as it sits out there today, two-year storm. Very, very much reduction in flow. What that means to the parking lot over at Sioux Falls is that when you take into account our development, as well as the remaining or the balance of the 89-acre watershed that is to the north primarily and to the east, that the event 100-year after we are there will be reduced, the runoff rate past their parking lot will be reduced to a predeveloped or, as it were today, a 50-year storm. So our detention, we listened, and we're trying to help out their drainage issues.
Rick, we're giving you an awful lot of time here, but I thought that those were two very important subjects that I think there was a lot of questions about, so we're giving you a little leeway.
Well, thank you. I'll finish up here in about a minute and a half.
Very good.
Maybe a minute. Real quickly, moving forward, our projected out-to-bid is August of this year, and a start of construction would be in October of this year, and we would hope to grand open in September of next year. And that is really all I've got to say. I apologize for going over. With that said, I am here for questions, as for design team and the Walmart representatives that have made the trip and come out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Fellow commissioners, would there be any questions of Rick at this time? Rick, it doesn't look like we might have some questions right now, but hang in there.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening that'd like to comment on item number 15?
Hi, I'm Dale Long, Lincoln County Commissioner, District 3, which is Springdale Township and Sioux Falls, east of Cliff now. And I live down on 27115475, which is two miles south of this project, right on Cliff Avenue.
Okay, Dale.
Jim Schmidt, Lincoln County Commissioner, 716 East St. Andrews Drive. Good evening. Tonight, Commissioner Long and I are representing the individuals who live outside the city limits of Sioux Falls with their concerns, and I also am representing the citizens that live within the confines of the city limits of Sioux Falls. We're very cognizant of the fact that the jurisdiction of Lincoln County ends where the city limits begin, but we have two major concerns, which we are going to bring to you, which we have been addressed by several of our constituents. And Dale will address the first one, and I'll take the last one, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. But we appreciate the opportunity to appear in front of you this evening.
It was said that the C4 would be on an arterial-type highway, and south of that corner, all it is is a two-lane county road, and a mile south of that, 85th Street, still gravel going both ways. A mile east, 69th Street, still gravel going both ways. And on our two-lane county road, we don't have room for one more car from 7:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning till 8:30. It is plugged. They're backed up a half-mile waiting to get through every stop sign all the way to town. I went to a meeting downtown here one time, thinking I could get downtown in 20 minutes. Took me 40 to get up Cliff Avenue and get downtown. It is just absolutely plugged. We had any cars out there, and we're going to have to do some major reconstruction on Cliff Avenue, which, as county commissioner, we don't have funds to do. So we can't just look north at the traffic. We got the whole town of Harrisburg, I think, gets up in the morning and goes up Cliff Avenue. And I live on it, and I can't even get out of my house unless somebody's nice enough to let me out. But so I just wanted to say, we've got to look at traffic going both ways. Thanks.
Thank you, Depp.
City of Harrisburg, by the way, grew in the last 10 years from 480 people to almost 5,000, so you have a lot of people. I heard the representative from Walmart talk about a concern which we have, and that is water, and that they have a contingency plan to address a 100-year flood. Well, that is the headwaters of Spring Creek, and Spring Creek, as you know, flows down to Schindler, and if any of you were there last year, you will know what happened at Schindler. And I'm cautioning you and asking you to double down and make sure that these plans are accurate, because when you have a 100-year event, you also have a huge amount of rain. And what happened at Schindler was that there are holding ponds up there that met all of the requirements of the city, and I have no problem with the city. They do a tremendous job, but there is an equal amount of rain that comes down that complicates when ponds are full, and therefore, we had several homes that were flooded. And another concern we have is that we spent over $100,000 of taxpayer money just to get a plan in place so that we can apply for a grant. And if you know anything about county government, you'll know that those tax dollars are hard to come by, and we have to be as careful as we can on spending those. Most of those tax dollars come from where? They come from the constituents out of Sioux Falls. So I ask you, when you review the water plan, the 100-year event plan that they have, be very, very careful, because I'm not saying that the engineering is not good. That's not my point. The point is, those waters, if they come, and they come very fast off of a parking lot, and they come through the school, but they also hit a lot of our residents that live outside the city limits of Sioux Falls. So those are two concerns. One is traffic. And if any of you think that Dale is not telling the truth, you come down, and it's not only Cliff Avenue, there's a problem. If you go in the morning, and I have left Sioux Falls on 26th Street, and there's constant cars from 26th Street all the way down to 106. Now, those people are coming from Iowa, they're coming across into Harrisburg, they're coming from all over. So those are two concerns we have, and I'm... So those are two concerns we have, and I'm sure you can understand them. So with that, I would say thank you, and I'd be happy to answer.
Jim, Dale, hang on just a second. Good to see you guys. Would there be any questions for Jim or Dale?
I will make the comment that when we talk about infrastructure development, streets in particular, Sioux Falls is somewhat of a unique community. If you go out to our neighbors bigger than us to the south in Omaha and Council Bluffs, to the north in Minneapolis, in their suburbs, it's not uncommon to drive out to a developing area and see all the infrastructure out there. The roads are out there, the sewers are out there, the streets are out there. They have a different tax structure than we do here in South Dakota that allows them to proceed like that. We do it differently here, for a lot of reasons and for reasons that people have approved of since the beginning of our tax structure. We go in behind the infrastructure and build up the roads and the streets and the sewer and the infrastructure. So like it or not, that's the position that we have taken as a state and as a city and as a community and as a county. So I can appreciate the traffic there. I travel that area as well. But I think to say that we cannot allow progress or a development because of further traffic fears, it's all over Sioux Falls. It's all over South Dakota, and it's just the way we've set ourselves about doing business in South Dakota.
Thank you, Jesse.
This is Jim.
Danny?
Jim, a quick question. There's been some ideas floating around out there that maybe this isn't the best place for a Walmart. Maybe it should be two miles further south. What do you think about that idea?
You mean to answer that?
Well?
I might know a spot. Danny, I think that the constituents that are here tonight, and God bless them all, because they're here because that's what we're all about as a country, in that we have boards like you. And I want to tell you, this is what you get the big bucks for, to make these decisions.
When does that start?
And we might just want to state what our salary is.
Well, come down to Lincoln County, we at least give them mileage and a meal. Danny, I think there are lots of places inside in our area, or in, I should say, in Sioux Falls, that would accommodate this, maybe in a better spot. You know, it's a tough call, because people will tell you, well, aren't you in favor of added taxes? Of course, we're always looking for added taxes. Are we not growth-oriented? Of course, we're growth-oriented. We have our own planning and zoning situations that we need to take care of. But Danny, there are alternative sites that are available.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? If not, thank you, fellas.
Hello.
Hello. Jay Wautstra, Superintendent, Sioux Falls Christian Schools. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight. I'm not going to restate what's been said already, and I do thank the Walmart people for the work they've done on the drainage issue, because it has been a big concern for us. I just want to address you on two concerns, and one of them might not be appropriate, but I'm going to say it anyway. One of our concerns as a school is the alcohol sales within 500 feet of our property line. I've met with different folks in this room on that question, and I've been told that other schools' conditional use permits have been granted, such as O'Gorman, Roosevelt, Washington. And I understand that. The difference that we have is we've got daycare on our campus. We're daycare through 12th grade, and none of those other schools have that. O'Gorman has 7th and 8th graders on that campus, and that's the youngest students there. And I know that we're not real concerned about 2nd graders and 3-year-olds going out and buying alcohol, but I think it's a safety thing from a school's point of view that we would want to raise to you, because we're definitely not in favor of an alcohol sale that close to our building. And our second one is the traffic as well. I know you mentioned that we've built after the fact. Well, if you come out to Sioux Falls Christian any given day, from 8:00 to 8:30, or from 3:10 to 3:35, our parking lot is a mess, and we've got cars everywhere. We have one in and one out of that building, and we service 1,000 kids. Back in '08, we serviced 300 kids on that campus, and now we're at 975, to be exact. We don't have any busing, so all of our parents drive, our high school kids drive, 8th graders drive, and the amount of cars that's going to be added to 69th Street and Cliff, I think is going to be astronomical to an area that can't support more vehicles today. I have provided for you a video of our parking lot, and I don't know if they can get that up there or not, but we took a little video clip of what it looks like on a given day. So I think as far as traffic is concerned, you've got Cliff Avenue going south, and I agree with the statements made. Cliff Avenue going north. Of our parking. The interstate. Two. Drives. I've mentioned semi trucks that would come at 5 a day. There are also trucks that tow five. With trucks and goods at Walmart, and there they go. So traffic is a huge. It's getting one in one. Which I'm sure, to add cars, is a disaster of where we stand as a school. I ask you, if the plan mission would deny the rezoning request for you tonight, and the number of people that the school would then find, four families, so that's five more residents that we represent daily basis in a much number. So the request that you would deny the rezoning.
Thank you, Jay. Before you sit down, would there be any questions from any of the commissioners?
Jay, I'm curious about one thing. My staff report shows that Sioux Falls Christians 800 feet away from the property line. It's the Sioux Falls stadium that's 500 feet away. I don't know if you should answer that, or if maybe staff could clarify that.
Maybe staff would. I was told we're 450 feet away.
Why don't you write that question down, and we'll, when we get our discussion turned, we'll address that. Question? Thank you for taking the evening and visiting with us.
Good evening. My name's Dave Hewitt. I reside at 5813 Tomar Road. We've, in the last couple of months, I've got to know a lot of people on the southeast side of Sioux Falls, great people. And we share great concern about the proposed development of a Walmart at the corner of 65th and Cliff, 69th and Cliff. We understand this is a multi-step process, that there will be lots of little steps that we take. But as we begin this process in, well, I guess it's already begun, we are going to ask you to overturn the staff's recommendation of support for this rezoning proposal. Let me, if I, we know, and I know, having attended your meeting last month, this commission is all about proper land use. Part of that is economic development, but as you heard from, I think we were the last four in the audience, your staff, the department, Planning Department, talked about, when we talk about proper land use, it's not just about economic development, but it's also about social and environmental concerns as well. And so it is, from that perspective, a proper land use that I want to share some comments with you tonight. Mr. Chair, I couldn't help but watch the news last night, and I noted some nervousness about what might take place this evening. I'm new at this, so I'm pretty nervous myself.
You're doing a good job.
But I want to, I hope we join in the feeling, and I want to assure you that the only thing that we have to fear here are the facts, and to make sure that we make an objective decision about going forward and listen to the facts that I think a lot of talented people that we've found in the southeastern part of Sioux Falls will bring you tonight. In my job, I travel around the state a lot. I see a lot of communities, and I can tell you that the business locating a Walmart at the corner of 69th and Cliff just doesn't meet their business plan. If you think about where Walmarts are located, in Mitchell, in Pier, in Rapid City, in Aberdeen, they are not in residential areas. They are not neighborhood employment centers. You've heard of concerns about traffic. You may hear about the Oakmont Apartments. It's an interesting situation. If you've driven out there, Jane Wayne is where all these trucks will be making a left-hand turn going right behind an apartment complex, and the answer from Walmart to reduce noise is a chain link fence and some trees. Now, 18-wheeler trucks going by there, I'm sorry, may disturb a good night's sleep. And think about also where those trucks are coming from. They're coming probably from Interstate 229 up Cliff. They're downshifting to get up that road, which is two-lane. I don't know how you're going to make that four-lane. And there's a lot of noise for those residents, too. And someone, one of our compatriots will talk about noise in his remarks. The traffic report says 25 large trucks a week. That's about half of what the average Walmart usually receives in a given week. And tonight, we heard from the gentleman from Walmart say, well, it'll be, I think he said, six to five to seven, or five to six a day. I think that's what we heard, so maybe that number's gone up a bit. But still, that's a lot of trucks. Safety. We haven't heard a lot about safety. We don't get a lot of police traffic in our part of the city, and we're grateful for that. In fact, there's a running joke around our area. If you see a Sioux Falls Police Squad car, you stop them and make sure that they're not lost. Because, but frankly, and someone else will address this, the number of police calls to Walmarts in this city are substantially higher than to other department stores, and we will share those numbers with you. Property values. We don't know if they're going to go down or up. They're certainly not going to go up. But it's time of a very risky real estate market. This isn't helping the risk factor, and people are very concerned, at a minimum, concerned about that risk. Water runoff, you've heard about. There is no bus route. There is no bike path to this place in a neighborhood employment area. That's what you're supposed to have. There is this fixation on Hy-Vee, as all the comparisons are with Hy-Vee, and why didn't you come out to those hearings in 2006 and what have you? Well, I think at the time, we were looking for some kind of grocery shopping on that side of town, and it seemed appropriate. Also, when you look at the dimensions of the store, 103,000 versus 154,000 square feet, that's a big difference. In fact, the difference is a football field from end zone to end zone, that's the difference. That's the size difference that we're talking about from the Hy-Vee to the Walmart development. Now, we always thought, we were led to believe, that the 2035 plan adopted by the City Council and the counties of Minnehaha and Lincoln would guide development. And as you can see before you, the corner of 69th and Cliff is, as it's stated by the Planning Department, a neighborhood employment center. Let me read for you your definition of a neighborhood employment center, and you tell me if that, yes.
We've all read that. You don't need to read it to us.
Okay. So if you have it, it is not a 155,000-square-foot place. I will say this. You know, Walmart has awoken a sleeping giant on the southeast side of Sioux Falls. We are prepared to take this as far as it needs to go, because we are about saving our neighborhoods. It is about a proper use of land, given how that land has developed over the last 15 to 20 years. So we urge you to reject this recommendation for rezoning. I would say this. In a neighborhood, when you look at a neighborhood employment center, they want these buffers. The buffer is, in fact, you know, an office building or what have you. You know, one of the things that happened at that neighborhood get-together to learn more about Walmart back in February, my question was, well, are you going to allow RVs to park in your parking lot overnight? I assume in that part of the parking lot that you're supposed to be rezoning. I would hope that you wouldn't rezonate just for that matter, because the response that I got from Walmart was, well, we'll get back in. That's really the manager's decision. Not a lot of compassion. So please reject this, and we hope that we can probably step back from a very ill-conceived plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, just a second. Commissioners, would there be any questions for Dave? Did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's David Moore. I live at 5809 South Tomar Road, and I speak not only for myself, but for the concerns of many of the 1,300 petitioners that we've received. I think you had all agreed that no work was done on the Hy-Vee store at the, by ordinance requirements, both a development and a conditional use, the plans expire after one year with no work. When no work, the plans, therefore, the SHAPE 2035 plan was adopted with the wording, "said plan to succeed the 2035." So after April 7, 2011, which was a year after the conditional use permit for Hy-Vee, this lot falls under the 2035 plan as a neighborhood employment center. And per the SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Development Plan Summary Outline that you guys have, any change not consistent with the future planned development map must first receive approval from the City Council to vary from the plan before any zoning changes are made. Has that? Under the abutting land use section that was in staff's planning, we note that the compatibility ranks shown are based on using a commercial 3. However, Walmart, due to their building size, should be classified as a building, as a commercial 4, and under Exhibit 4B there, your density, where they're showing, they would show a low-density to a residential as a 1, and a medium-density residential as a 2, if that proper use was utilized. The compatibility definitions, for one, is incompatible with the surrounding uses, and two, is significant conflicts. I think that's quite in variation to the 3s, 4s, and 5s. Let's go to page 5. Under the landscape plan, there are a number of trees and fences shown by Walmart. Under the landscape plan, there are a number of trees and fences shown by Walmart. But the screens in the trees, I'm sorry, the trees in that screen fence will mostly The bottom picture is basically that corner where the trucks come in. And any noise, we found a noise study where they did an existing Walmart store out in California where they had more or less a truck route right next to the property lines. As you can see, kind of where I highlighted, noise levels are over 70 decibels. They're showing a range of 72 to 77. Noise levels show maximum sound levels of 60 decibels during the day and 55 after 10:30 for those areas. And that's any residential. It doesn't matter if it's high-density, low-density, it's any residential area. So one question we kind of have is, does this council feel comfortable approving a plan that because of the tension in layout, there's most likely to be numerous noise violations? And how will those neighborhood residents receive compensation for... On the Engineering Section? Walmart seems not to have done a study. I mean, you guys say it in here that it's being completed. And so they're asking you to basically make your decisions based on a 2009 traffic study, corridor study. And we're just wondering, does that study from 2009 show the increased traffic from Harrisburg? My wife and I walked north Cliff in the last year, last summer. We saw a traffic count right on Cliff. Has that data been included? I'm just wondering if putting a signal there in the lane wouldn't be... Chapter two. Oh, no, that's, what's shown below there. Basically avoiding signals on artillery streets and prevention of traffic. That's where that intersection. And because Jane Lane would be a direct line, you're pretty much shooting people right straight down that street. On the light, can anyone here name a location on Cliff Avenue where there is a light for a single retail operation? Think about, is there any lights on 69th Street or even 57th Street or Western Avenue? There is none. Are you guys now setting a precedent where you're lining up lights for individual shop We're just still wondering if this committee has enough information on the traffic volumes. And not only does this study, are we worried about the artillery streets, but also for the residential collector streets like Cliff and Lewis in that area. You know, right now, it's almost impossible to get out on Cliff. So everybody in the residence goes onto Lewis and onto Cliff or onto Tomar because they can't get Lewis or onto Cliff.
David, you have a number of questions that I'm hoping that when we get to the discussion period, I hope all commissioners are writing these down and we can get some answers. You know, we are in receipt of a very well-put-together letter that you sent to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I think we've all had an opportunity to kind of read through that. It's very well put together. Have you had a chance with planning staff in regards to...
Yes, I've talked a number of times with Steve and went over that and one time with Jeff. And, you know, because we're also wondering, you know, on 69th, right down there is Prairie Green. You know, that's a city-owned property. You know, are you going to start affecting their revenue because people can't get in and out of Prairie Green? I mean, it's hard enough getting out of the pub section and turning back just on that line.
David, you seem like a good-natured fellow.
Oh.
I know you are, and I appreciate that.
They're showing that on there, if you go right down at the bottom, maybe just up a little bit, Walmart will have approximately 25 large trucks per day, two to three days. Well, in that traffic study that we had up earlier, an existing one, they recorded eight semi-trucks per day from the same-sized store. So Walmart says three to four. You know, that's like double the traffic count.
I think we're in luck tonight. I think we've got somebody from engineering here.
The Institute of Traffic Engineers, who are basically the definitive source on number counts for any buildings, this is their count for superstores. So if you take their little calculations, the trip generation rate for 150,000-square-feet store, the weekend rate or weekday rate would be 7,000. The Saturday rate would be 8,300. I don't, when we talked, you know, we had some people from our group talk with Hy-Vee, and they said their expected traffic counts were under 2,000. I'm just wondering why Walmart's has such differing traffic counts.
David, thank you. I appreciate you coming up.
And one last point that's... I'm sorry, my page just got out of order. No, it's here. If you go up to page... From their presentation, that the office zoning was previously established at the public meetings to provide a transitional use between commercial and Lincoln Hills residents. And we're just kind of wondering how this transitional work will cross... On there, staff says perhaps 50 feet or more in width. I think you had all agreed that if members of this commission can answer these questions, that maybe more time is needed, you know, and hopefully we can get this resolved. But I think we should disapprove the chain zone, you know, just because of the violation or the... With 2035 plan. Thank you.
David, thank you for speaking this evening. You did a good job. Would there be any questions for David? Any questions for David? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, on that. I think we've been very generous in giving you more than five minutes of time. So I would ask that, really, you stick to the five-minute time limit. I would ask that we not applaud after. We are very pleased with the information that you're bringing us. But in order to keep the meeting moving, I ask that we just continue to take testimony and keep moving forward.
Thank you, Jessica.
My name is Dan Harmelank, and it's going to be a tough act to follow, but I'll get to that. I am here on behalf of Sioux Falls Christian. I am the president of the school board this year. I'm also a lawyer at Woods Fuller Schulten Smith here in town. I think most importantly, however, though, I'm a parent. I'm a parent of three young children that attend Sioux Falls Christian, a fifth grader, a third grader, and a kindergartner. So needless to say, over the next 12 years, I'm going to spend many, many nights and many, many days at Sioux Falls Christian. So this issue hits close to home to me, and I see many other parents of Sioux Falls Christian students in the crowd tonight, and I know they feel very much the same way that I do. So, you know, and I think I can speak for most, if not all of them, when I say, we as a school are very concerned by what's being proposed here. We share in many of the concerns that have been voiced so far tonight. You know, I think quite simply, it comes down to the placement of 150,000-square-foot heavy-traffic retail center almost across the street from a school that has 1,000 young kids at, with all of the traffic issues associated with that, like Jay indicated, Mr. Wildster indicated. It's simply not good for the residents of the city of Sioux Falls, and it's not compatible with the existing land uses around that property. And I won't reiterate what we've talked about so far, but I'll just hit a couple of highlights. You know, on the traffic piece, there's been a traffic study, but I think anybody who's been in that area, particularly when school is starting or school is ending, will know that it's really a nightmare already out there from a traffic standpoint. That has only gotten worse over the last few years because we've lost one of the ingresses and egresses to the school. So we're left in a situation where we've got one inlet and outlet that's going to be directly across from 150,000-square-foot busy retail center. That's just not a good situation. It's not a safe situation for the parents and for the kids, and frankly, for the Walmart customers that are going to be there. It's going to be a traffic nightmare. Also, we understand that this is owned commercial and that there will be some commercial use on that property. I think it's a matter of scope. The staff report indicated that this is akin to the Walgreens on Minnesota or the Goodwill or the Ace Hardware. Those are much different in scope and size. What we're talking about here is 150,000 square feet with all the traffic that's associated with that. So we understand that that is commercial property. But when you look at the scope and size of what's being proposed there, it's just not compatible with the existing land uses that are there. The other issue is one that Mr. Wildster touched on, and that's alcohol sales. And as I understand it, there would be a conditional use permit required because of the proximity to the school. And the staff report cited some instances where conditional use permits were allowed for convenience stores in close proximity to high schools. This isn't just a high school. This is an elementary school. This is a middle school. This is a daycare. This is a preschool. And I'm not aware of any example in Sioux Falls where there is alcohol within that proximity of those types of facilities. So, you know, just to summarize, we're not here to suggest that this is something against Walmart. It's against the use that's being proposed here, the scope and size of the use, given the neighborhood that already exists, given the school that's there, given all of the children and families that spend so much time in that area from a traffic standpoint and from a safety standpoint. And we ask that you just really consider those things when you think about whether this is an appropriate land use in that area for the Sioux Falls and those people that would be very significantly impacted.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions, Dan? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, we're kind of getting to that hour session. I would like, we'll have a couple, three more, but I'd like some new information. I think we get it on traffic. I think we get it on alcohol and we get it on the school. Having said that, who are you?
My name is Michelle Smith. I am the regional manager for IRET Properties. I represent Oakmont Estates, which would be 84 feet from where the proposed driveway would be for the Walmart. Half of our complex would be facing... Said there'd be 6,000 cars entering and exiting per day. That means that half of my residents would be facing that parking lot with a noise pollution. The proposed plan is a few trees and a chain-link fence. We're also just in an $80,000 project in upgrading our drainage issue. We didn't have, no one from Walmart has contacted us or our community or myself in regards to traffic studies or drainage. We are 84 feet from where the driveway will be, 42 feet from the property line. You have to excuse me, I'm sick. So what we have is we're bringing in the concerns not only from, we own and operate the apartment community, but also for our residents and our property manager who also lives on site. This would be a huge detriment to our property. Where the proposed new stoplight will be is on the corner of one of our buildings. Again, 6,000 to 12,000 cars. It's a 24-hour a day store. How would you like to live 84 feet from that day in, day out, going through? And I'm not the only apartment community. There's a sister community that belongs to another property management company right next door. We would face the parking lot, they would face the building. So we did want to bring that up because I think a lot of the issues, you have seen some of the photos of our community, so you can see how close it would be. But again, we do ask that the conditionals uses be denied.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy White, and I'm part of the group Saving Our Neighborhoods. I'm also a mother with small children. I live in the surrounding neighborhood, and I also send my kids to Sioux Falls Christian Schools. My first concern being the Walmart wants to build adjacent to a future neighborhood park. As you can see in the map above, it's the Judy Park. As you can see, we have a beautiful neighborhood park with picnic areas, playground facilities, and a wonderful wildlife habitat ordering it. What you don't see is a big commercial building with lots of traffic, thousands of cars, semis, delivery trucks, RVs, bright lights, noise, and so on. This is not the picture I had imagined, and I think most people would agree. It's not the picture they would have had imagined either. I then asked a question, is this responsible planning? According to the Planning Commission's staff report, as stated on page 16 of your PDF documents, quote, "Concerns were raised about persons watching the school playground from the proposed Walmart. What bothers me is nothing was mentioned regarding your persons watching my kids playing on a playground that is directly adjacent to your proposed Walmart. I ask, is this responsible planning?" I now want to hit on safety, being a mother with small children. I have in front of me a police call log report taken within the last 30 days. My first report here is from the West Side Walmart. I have close to 50 calls in the last 30 days from disorderly subjects, customer disputes, shoplifting, reckless drivers, suspicious subjects. I also looked at the police log report from the Hy-Vee on 57th and Cliff Avenue. It's not even close to 50 calls. It's two. Yes, two calls in the last 30 days. One on mental illness, the other on an accident in the parking lot. I even looked at the East Side Walmart. Close to 20 calls ranging from shoplifting, hit-and-run, disorderly subjects, DWIs, just to add to the list. Being located nearly adjacent to the Walmart in Dolly Farm, had half as many calls as the Walmarts on the east side. And I'll even throw in the Hy-Vee and Sycamore Avenue, which is a bigger and busier Hy-Vee than the one we have on 57th and Cliff. Five police reports. Accidents and a missing person were included. Now you tell me, as a mother of small children, which store I'd feel safer with in my neighborhood? I don't know if a lot of you guys remember, but just to add to the concern of Walmart and the degree of police reports, the severity of police reports, back in 2005, we had an attempted burner on the Walmart on Louise Avenue. Next, I'll talk about neighborhood projects that the Planning Commission has deemed as comparable. I'll just skip this slide, I'll just talk about them. You guys had noted that there are some significant commercial development projects comparable in neighborhoods, like the one you're proposing of the Walmart. You guys mentioned ShopCo at East 10th, Hy-Vee, West 26th Street, South Marion Walgreens, 26th Street, Minnesota Avenue, Ace Hardware, West 41st Street, South Suratoma, Goodwill at 41st and Sycamore. I just have a question, and I don't understand how, how we're comparing these stores, considering the size of Walmart in comparison to the stores I have in front of me. I know that the Walgreens at 26th and South Minnesota has 70 parking stalls, whereas Walmart is proposing close to 600. I ask myself again, is this responsible planning? Last point I'm going to hit on is the nearly seven acres of wetlands and nearly 30 acres of wildlife that sits adjacent to your proposed Walmart site. Within the Planning Commission staff report under site description, there is no mention of the nearly seven acres of wetlands completely adjoining your site plan. It is to my understanding that these bodies of water are protected under the South Dakota Surface Water Control, Water Quality Standards. It is also to my understanding that there are set agencies set forth to protect these wetlands and the abundance of wildlife they bring. During my research, I came across hundreds of pages of reports done during your east-side corridor environmental assessment. It is to my knowledge that there has not been an environmental assessment done concerning these adjacent wetlands. Of the multiple recommendations set out to, in order to protect the environment, I will quote an important assessment that I believe pertains to our situation presented here. It is a letter to Mr. Jeff Schmidt, who is the Assistant Director of Planning for the City of Sioux Falls, from the Department of Game Fish and Parks. In the letter, it mentions affected wetlands and ways to protect them. It quotes, in previous discussions with the City of Sioux Falls and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, stormwater detention ponds have been proposed as mitigation for the city's development projects. It is our view that stormwater retention facilities should not be located in or directly affecting existing wetlands or other waters of the state, nor should these ponds be allowed to compensate for the loss of natural wetland. In addition to constant disturbance from people, domestic pets, and vehicles, stormwater ponds will generally collect low-quality water. The collected water will then enter the ponds, bring in pollutants, pesticides, fertilizers from the adjacent area into the system, and the stormwater pond, although providing some positive functions that wetlands provide, will most likely lose its wildlife benefits due to the constant habitat degradation and disturbance. It is to my knowledge that Walmart has proposed a detention pond on the east side of the property adjacent to the wetlands. It is to my understanding that this will help with the drainage problem. What was not taken into consideration is how the runoff of pollutants into the pond would affect the nearly seven acres of wetlands and nearly 30 acres of wildlife. I believe an environmental study should be taken into consideration.
Jamie? Jamie?
Sir.
Thank you. Did you, are you about finished there?
I, yeah, I had one more, and I'd wanna wrap it up.
Could you be real quick? We've got some other people that would like to speak.
Okay. I've expressed my valid concerns on safety and environment, which directly affects my quality of life as well as my children's. I stand before you, Planning Commission, and ask you the same question. Is this responsible planning? Your recommendation is supposed to be highly considered going into the council vote. They rely heavily upon you to make the right recommendation. How is one supposed to make the right recommendation without all the data being collected before us? We have to be proactive in this situation, not reactive, and if we don't have the infrastructure currently in place, is that responsible? Is this responsible? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for getting up and voicing your opinion. Any questions? If not, thank you.
Good evening. Eric Willardson, Willardson Land Engineering, here on behalf of Sioux Falls Christian High School, and also the Villas on Prairie Green. I'm the engineer for site development for the Sioux Falls Christian High School, also the University of Sioux Falls complex, and most of the property immediately to the south, across the street from the proposed development. Understanding this is a zoning issue that you were all considering tonight, and as staff has pointed out to you, this zoning on this property started out as multifamily and residential zoning. It has developed into commercial and office uses, and now is proposed to be turned into a completely commercial use. Obviously, we've heard the audience tonight and their concerns, again, represents Sioux Falls Christian High School, and they came to me, and they said, Eric, what can we do? This property's zoned commercial, what can we do? I mean, do they have traffic concerns, drainage concerns, other concerns? I think it's, I'm intimately familiar with this area of town. It's what can we do? We need, you need to offer an alternative site. And there are some alternative sites, and so they asked me to propose some alternate sites. So I do have some drawings that they asked me to do, to propose a couple of alternate sites for this property, which meet with what would meet with the criteria that Walmart might be looking for, would be serviced by infrastructure that the City of Sioux Falls can provide for them, serves the same basic land area that they're looking for. So if I may, I would like to show you those two sites that we've looked at.
Eric, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no, Eric. You know what? We're here to talk about the office zoning in the C4 zone.
And alls I'm saying is, there are alternates up there.
And I'm sure Walmart is aware of those.
When there are alternate sites available, that are already zoned for this use, they're annexed into the city, they're available with water and sewer. So this is not the only opportunity that you have.
Eric, I think it might be appropriate you could introduce yourself to these folks. I think, not knowing what might happen here, this might not happen, I consult whether that's a discussion they have right now.
And that may be true, and understand your concerns. You to know, and we understand, and what's been communicated to me through Sioux Falls Christian, is that Walmart is not interested in looking at another site unless this site is deemed unacceptable by the Planning Commission and ultimately the city council.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate your comment. We're gonna allow more. Yes, sir, you'd introduce yourself.
My name's Rex Pruitt. I live at 6204 South Tomar Road. I'm in the Diamond Valley Edition. I wanted to just mention a couple things. I've already provided this information to the council and the mayor. I didn't know that it needed to go before the Planning Commission, so I probably circumvented a step, but I'm gonna give it to you guys, too. You probably have your email on the website, so I'll do that. But I'm gonna be brief, I'll try and do mine in two minutes or less, okay? I thought it was very appropriate that this is called...
Dave's gonna have a watch on you there, see, we'll see.
All right. Appropriate that this is tagged as C4, you know, explosive, right? Somebody got it. I have a study that I found on the economic impact of Walmart. It's been said, well, this isn't about Walmart, but it really is. It's about Walmart. So let's be frank, let's be honest. Are they really gonna generate the ROI for economic impact in this city and in this metropolitan servicing area? This economic impact study was done by Business Planning Solutions Global Insights Services Division. It's a 60-page analytic report. I do analytics for a living, have been doing it for over 30 years. It's my profession, and I understand it. My degree is in marketing management, so I understand the marketing aspects of this as well. If we're talking about economic development and return on investment, this is not the investment we want in this area. This area could gain a lot more by a more high-end development. I would like to read an excerpt briefly.
Think you've got a minute left.
It's quick, okay, one minute? All right, I can read this in one minute. According to the county-level economic impact study, in the second, or in, on page two of this report, there's not a significant impact to the economic development by adding a Walmart. Quoting the study abstract, county results, with the opening of a typical 150 to 350-person store in a county retail, or the retail employment tends to increase by 137 jobs over the short term and levels off to a 97-job increase over the longer term. Additionally, this indicates that Walmart seems to displace other retail establishments, but also serves to stimulate the overall development of the retail sector that leads to the overall positive impact in terms of retail employment for the counties in which Walmart has expanded. My question here is, do we really want this type of marginal growth in the area? If we're a city, and as a city, are going to stimulate only the retail market, specifically in garden supply and general merchandise, which the study showed, which they're not gonna do, they're not gonna do garden, they're not gonna do tire, which was a big promoter for revenue, tax revenue. The other point I wanted to quote was on page 19. It says, from this study, quote, "Walmart's presence in the economy does not affect the composition of tax receipts." So if they were gonna make money, we're not. Federal and state and local tax receipts, as a share of GDP, were the same in the economies with and without a Walmart, state control groups. So therefore, you have it, I'll... ...for declining this zoning.
This'll be our last speaker tonight.
We're looking at a minute and a half here. I'm gonna start now. My name is Dan Mandolfo. I live at 2204 South Camden Avenue, and I am the chairman of the Sioux Falls Zoological Society, and I would like to come up here and say thank you to Walmart for their philanthropy and for their generosity to the community of Sioux Falls. They have, just last year, given $100,000 to the Great Plains Zoo for a new exhibit. They have scores of their volunteer employees who help out at the zoo and other organizations throughout the community. And Walmart has given millions of dollars to the Sioux Falls and South Dakota community, not just to the Great Plains Zoo, but to other really important initiatives, like Feeding South Dakota, Children's Care Hospital and Schools, and many other caring and important organizations. I think Walmart is a civic leader and a good corporate citizen, and would like to thank them for that, and think we could all agree on the, at least be grateful for their contributions and their giving. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We've had an awfully good discussion this evening. To move to a discussion process, we're gonna stop public comments at this time, but to move to a discussion at the commission level, I need a motion and a second so we can get to a discussion process.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a recommendation of approval for discussion of item number 14.
We have a motion, would there be a second?
15, excuse me.
15.
Yes, I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. This is time for discussion.
Well, it's clearly a very sensitive issue, and I think that, I only wish all of you could sit on this side of the desk to have the perspective that we do. This may not be, or may be, your first rodeo, but it's not ours. So I don't want any of you to think that regardless of what our decision is tonight, that we don't take the actions up here very seriously. We know they're emotionally charged for you, as we get your letters and your phone calls and your emails, so we know it's important. But our role in this body is to look at land use, and that is whether C4 is C4. We cannot look at what goes inside a C4. We can't pick our neighbor. And so to say we want a Hy-Vee, and we don't want a Walmart, we want a Target, we can't do that here. And I would encourage you to take that and those concerns to the city council, because that's where they can address those issues. But we can't do that here. So you may be disappointed that we can't do that, but that's not our role, and that's not what we've been appointed to do. So I don't want you to leave here thinking we didn't listen to you. Clearly, we didn't have any choice but to listen to you. So we do appreciate all the research that you've done. I think that, I'm only gonna speak for myself, that traffic studies have been done by the same company that did them before, so I have no reason to believe that HDR would provide a different or a sub-level of a traffic study than they would before, and I'll look for other input on...
Speaking of that traffic study, could we have the HDR rep come up? Can you give us a little bit of background about your company, what your qualifications are to do the traffic study, and what you look at when you do that, just so people know the depth that was looked into when these go on?
Sure. Again, my name is Jason Chenstedt. I'm with HDR Engineering here in Sioux Falls. I've been a professional engineer now for about nine years, primarily due to traffic and transportation. So since about 2000, I've done probably in the realm of 30 different traffic studies, large planning projects around the city, also for the South Dakota DOT. A lot of discussion has taken place here tonight regards to the Cliff Avenue Corridor study that was done in 2000, actually started at the end of 2007, kinda wrapped up in 2009. And I think the reason that they bring that up is just to bring it to the head that there was planning that was taking place before the proposal came for this commercial development. And so during the corridor study, should I start with that as on a rant? So during the corridor study, we looked at improvements on Cliff Avenue from 49th Street all the way south down to 85th Street. So it wasn't just at this intersection, per se, it was for a two-mile corridor. And during that study, we looked at traffic volumes out to the year 2028, and we spent a lot of time, we had two public meetings at Sioux Falls Christian, we worked with Sioux Falls Christian, we worked with all the developers at the intersection of 69th and Cliff, and so we tried to build all the land uses that they were proposing into the plan. And so we took those land uses and...
Can you step a little closer to the mic, sorry?
Sure. So we took those, is that better? So we took those land uses into account, and we developed a model up to the year 2028. And so the geometrics that were completed for that corridor study basically represented much more lane capacity than exists out there today. As we go from 57th down to 69th Street, we basically have a four-lane intersection that goes down to a three-lane roadway, and eventually south, as we get by the football stadium, down to a two-lane roadway. In that plan, we looked at reusing the corridor to a roadway that had two lanes in each direction, and some places had a raised median, some places had a two-way left-turn lane, and we had some additional locations for signals. And like I said, this went all the way from... And like I said, this went all the way from Forty-Ninth down to, uh, Eighty-Fifth. So, uh, I, I believe that you said earlier, a lot of the, uh, what, what's out there today isn't gonna be what's out there, uh, after these developments take place. And funding these improvements typically come at the time of the improvements, uh, the time of the developments. So that's kinda how we got involved with this, uh, it's just because we do have some, uh, familiarity with the intersection, with the corridor, um, and, and that's kinda, we're trying to shed a little light. Now, in regards to the study that was completed for Walmart, uh, for this year, and one gentleman asked if there was a study done, uh, there certainly was. Uh, basically, what we did is, uh, we took the, the Walmart development and dropped it in that area, uh, left all the other developments the same, uh, because we don't know. Some of them have been built by now, uh, some of them haven't. And we made those numbers now up to twenty-thirty-five. And the reason that we went to twenty-thirty-five is because of the Transportation Forecast Model, uh, that's developed to twenty-thirty-five. So when we put these studies together, the, uh, the city has a defined guidelines for us to do that in Chapter Five, and we have to analyze existing traffic volumes, uh, we have to analyze the volumes, uh, with the development, which would be existing plus Walmart in this case. And then we also have to look out to that horizon here, in this case, is twenty-thirty-five. And so in twenty-thirty-five, we look at a no-build, which means, uh, this is the, this is the traffic that's on the network from the city's model, and then we add that use in as well. And so those are kind of the four different things that we look at. And so for each study, uh, in magnitude is different on how far up and down the streets we go, uh, but we, we basically come down to a recommendation is, can we mitigate the level of service, uh, at all the study intersections into an acceptable level of service, which in this case, on an arterial street, would be level service D or better. So that, that's kind of the, uh, open range on what's required of these studies. So, uh, you know, up, up on the board right here, we have a good example. As you can see, we have geometrics. Uh, when we get down twenty years and this whole area redevelops, uh, we certainly won't have the roads we have out there today. This intersection, uh, at a minimum, will be two through lanes in each direction, uh, dual left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes. So this is an arterial arterial intersection, uh, similar to any of the large ones in Sioux Falls. Uh, so, uh, certainly gonna have a lot more capacity, uh, as this area grows. So I guess I can answer any specific questions. That's just kind of an overview.
I appreciate that. I think it's good for people to understand that it, it wasn't just anecdotally looked at from somebody driving down the road, it was a professional company, professional- and that's what they do for a living, is study these sorts of things.
Yeah, one, one thing I just wanted to bring up, and, and I guess Rick had kinda alluded to it before, uh, back in two thousand five, the South Dakota DOT actually went out and did several counts at six Walmarts, a Hy-Vee, Menards, and a Lowe's. And the reason to do that is to verify studies that we do, uh, not only HDR, but, uh, our profession, because when these big developments go in, they spend a lot of money improving roads, uh, doing that, and they wanted to make sure that what we were telling them in the studies, uh, actually was what was happening. So, uh, after we had done some studies, they went out and, and basically created this manual, and this is kinda what we use from now on as far as how we generate trips. So when you look at the trip generation for the Walmart on the south side of town, we're basically using, uh, the traffic that's generated, uh, at the east side Walmart. And so when we, there, there's been a lot of discussion on this versus Hy-Vee. These are counted volumes. It's, it's just a trip rate that was developed in South Dakota, uh, by professional engineers, and, and the counts are the counts. So the, a rate that would be applied to-
It is. The Walmart's the same way, so.
Jason, Jason.
Yes.
What did the results tell you? What will be the increase of traffic there on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, uh, the Walmart will probably generate a little over eight thousand vehicles a day.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, is, 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 uh, the current road system out there designed to handle that?
Uh, I mean, as development keeps growing, absolutely not. I mean, we, one of the reasons that we did the corridor study, uh, and there's also been, not only did Sioux Falls do a corridor study, but City Harrisburg participated in a corridor study, uh, in Lincoln County, which some of the commissioners, uh, were talking about before. So, uh, we know as development in this area continues, the road system that's out there today will not handle the traffic volumes that are there. I was just looking at the volumes, uh, in the study as some of the folks were talking, and right now, south of, south of, uh, of Sixty-Ninth Street, you have about seven thousand vehicles on that roadway. That's what the counts are out there today. And so after the Walmart, you're gonna have a couple thousand more on that roadway. But when we look out, uh, to twenty-thirty-five, you know, we're gonna be in that range of about twenty-five thousand vehicles that are on that as we get down to the South Dakota one-hundred corridor as that develops. So, um, I mean, this eighteen-acre commercial parcel, uh, is just one, you know, one M&M in the pot. You know, this whole area's gonna develop, um, there's commercial land south of here, there's all kinds of different land uses that exist east, west, and north, so.
Jason, would that traffic count be the same if there were, say it's not Walmart, it's, it's only commercial? Say we had three fifty thousand square foot buildings there, that traffic count would end up being that same?
I don't, I don't know.
By the way you'd figure it, you'd figure it out the-
You know, if we don't know what the land use is, we usually use, commercial use, ten thousand square foot per acre. And so, um, in the, in the study that we did in oh-nine, I'll just read some of the uses that were in that- some of the things that we had dropped in that parcel at that time, again, trying to generate a, a volume of traffic to fill it, uh, fast food restaurant, quality restaurant, gas station, uh, drive-in bank, specialty retail, single, uh, tenant office buildings, general office, medical office, and apartments. And so we kinda filled it with a gamut of mixed use, and that's kind of the plan someone had up there before. That's actually the plan that we used in our study, you know? So that, that per se didn't generate the same traffic as Walmart, it was a little lower, but not by a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Jason, thank you.
Yep.
If I can be sub- bold, is a representative from the engineering department here? If you'd come up.
Hello, I'm Heath, Principal Traffic Engineer for the city of Sioux Falls.
Heath, is it?
Yep.
Heath, a question that, uh, that, that comes up is this detention pond.
I'm saying planning staff. You called for an engineer, he's a traffic engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can't call for an engineer unless you-
Engineer, I thought it was all the same.
So- Brainage questions.
All right, okay. See, Heath, to me, an engineer's an engineer.
Yep.
Uh, there's a stop sign, a stoplight down at the entrance, uh, to Sioux Falls Christian.
Yes.
Uh, we've gotta stop on that intersection. A question was brought up, do you anticipate or see, uh, a need for another stop sign as you go down Cliff, uh, towards Jane Lane, I think was the street they were talking about? Do you see that?
At this point, we, we've been working with HDR on the traffic study, reviewing it and commenting on it, and we're in agreeance with all the, um, traffic volumes, the trip generations that are in the study. Right now, we're still working through some details with controls of some of the intersections and as far as access for some of the driveways, so.
Your job and concern is traffic and accidents and such like that. Our neighbors to the south talk about, and I was trying to picture in my mind as I go south of Cliff, seems to me that there is a double there, but it kinda siphons down as we get to the city limits. As the city limits continues to go out, does that widening that road? Is that a state highway, or does that become a city responsibility at that?
It's a city arterial street, and it's, um, to the south of, right, right now, we have the project that's occurring this summer from north of Fifty-seventh Street down to about, around the sixty-first, sixty-third street area, where we're doing some widening up on Cliff Avenue. And in the future, in our CIP in the next five years, we're looking at widening Cliff Avenue to the south through Sixty-Ninth Street.
Through Sixty-Ninth, uh, the anticipation is Eighty-Fifth being an arterial down the road, but that will depend on annexation and growth out to Eighty-Fifth, I suspect.
Yep.
We've always done that on Minnesota Avenue. Something else I was thinking of.
Mr. Chairman, Heath, um, what you're saying is, is that this year's project goes up to about sixty-first street, um, and then you're planning on expanding or making, um, Cliff Avenue wider in the future? How far out in the future is planned, do you know?
Right, and right now, we're looking at in the next five years.
The next five years?
Yep.
So Walmart, or the, the development is gonna be done by September of thirteen, and we're gonna have eight thousand cars coming on to, uh, for a day? Okay, that's just a question, okay?
And you're starting that widening at Forty-Ninth, taking it up through Fifty-seventh, past Fifty-seventh to Sixty-second? And that's gonna be done this year?
Yes, that's correct.
Would there be any other questions for traffic engineering? Keith, thank you. I'm glad you were here this evening.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Absolutely.
Um, one gentleman showed our compatibility chart. Does the size of the building change the rating from the C3, C4, like he stated? Is that correct in saying that?
There will be a change in compatibility ratings when we get to the conditional use permit. The rezoning is considering those sections that are shown on, uh-
Okay.
Exhibit only.
And that's what I was getting at. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about the original C4, we're just talking about-
The rezoning.
The little areas that were rezoning. So that compatibility chart is correct for those areas. Your compatibility is correct based on that?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, start.
Steve, and one of the questions, um, Kenny asked us to write down, it was talking about the alcohol sales and the distance to the school, and there was some swearing numbers there.
Right.
Can you clarify that for us?
Sure. Uh, the Sioux Falls Christian, uh, school people have indicated the, the uses within the building are coming into play here. So the eight-hundred-foot is to their building. Uh, if it's eight-hundred feet, then of course, a conditional use permit would not be required for the off-sale. It's only for off-sale within five-hundred feet. You actually have, uh, by measurement and according to ordinance, the distance five-hundred feet goes from the Walmart building to the school property line. The school property line, Sioux Falls Christian property, is within five-hundred feet of approximately where the Walmart building would go. Uh, I didn't put that in the report because we haven't done the conditional use permit yet. We don't really know the exact location of that building. But it's a good question, and that's my answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jeff? Uh, the engineer for, for the proposed store talked about building a larger retention detention pond that wouldn't, that would normally be called for?
That's correct.
Is, I think I've heard of some drainage issues down in that part of town. They also talk about that wetland. That has been looked at by engineering staff as far as not creating an issue for that wetland?
Correct. Um, the city has a principal drainage engineer, as well as water engineer, sanitary sewer engineer. Based upon the comments from the principal drainage engineer, they've reviewed the staff report and the traffic report, the, um, study that we've received, and they're in acceptance with it. It's basically the same information that Rick presented to you this evening in regards to meeting the fifty-year flood, even though they're only required to meet the hundred-year flood, so they're going above and beyond that standard. And then they go to cubic feet per second on how much water flowing is coming off of the site, and they've met those issues, and they're getting better than what they need to do for minimum standards. Now, in regards to the Conservation District and the wetland to the east, that's something, again, that we would make sure that we look at and address. Um, I thought the lady did a fantastic job, again, since the letter was sent to me, um, to look at what the issues are with detention next to wetlands. We have a conversation going on with the Conservation District. We wanna make sure that that works, as well as it still needs to be engineering standards so you don't have the infiltration between a detention pond and a wetland.
You wouldn't know, she did bring up a point, and I do remember that park being approved, or the park department buying that land back there to put a park in. You wouldn't have any timeframe ID or anything like that, would you?
Um, the timeframe for the park construction, no, we do not. It goes back to what Jesse mentioned and then Heath mentioned, we continue much, we're following development. We're now ahead of development, and specifically on the south end and down, um, talk to any residential neighborhood, we're a little behind in our parks. Um, we're not building new parks, they're really in the CIP right now, um, to the same level that the neighborhoods would like, but there isn't a program right now, I believe, for Judy. If it is, and in the CIP, it'd be out in that five-year timeframe.
I know you've had an opportunity to visit, uh, that young fellow, Dave Moore, in regards to the letter he sent. He brings up some points about, are we adhering to neighborhood development versus, uh, neighborhood versus regional? And analyze that, and the staff feels comfortable that we're doing what we advertised-
Correct. It, that goes back to what Steve Randall's been stating, is we're looking at the compatibility, we're looking at the zoning and the land use for what's being requested for the rezoning. We have a one-acre office development that we're, honestly, that's what we're talking about. On the northwest side of the site, that's a one-acre development that's going from office to C4. We heard some issues and concerns about drainage tonight and about conservation on the east side, but I don't know if we've heard the same issues and concerns about that rezoning going from office, which would be parking lots and buildings, which would really have some impacts, which it could do now. Detention pond would be better than that. So then you quickly get to, so the issue we're talking about is, is that one-acre site, office to C4, in conformance with the twenty-thirty-five plan? Um, we've looked at it, we believe it's still neighborhood compatible, it's a neighborhood area, uh, we wanna have connections, we talk about through there. We would like to also, someone mentioned, we need bike trails and bus routes out here. We agree, we need to do those, but we're chasing that type of development. Um, and then the last thing that they really talk about with neighborhood centers is, should the area develop, it needs to be fifty percent or less of the whole entire center of, for commercial development. So when you look at a neighborhood center, it talks about sixty acres of land area there, and so less than thirty acres would be fifty percent commercial, and this is at twenty-seven acres. You have the seventeen acres, the seven for the Lewis, and you have approximately ten acres next to Sioux Falls Christian on the south side of Sixty-Ninth Street.
Steve, or Jeff, as you've listened to any of the other questions, can you think anything else that jumps out? My notepad is just a mess.
I'd be able to answer questions, but that's what it really comes down to. Um, we have looked at land use, they bring up some questions, you know, that we have looked at, and we understand. Um, it was in compliance back in two thousand six when they rezoned it to C4. That was the rezoning at that time that we looked at, not the old office. So that makes sense. It's the intersection of two arterials. We'd like to make sure we have the improvements. We've made improvements to Sixty-Ninth Street in the last couple of years, based upon Sioux Falls Christian and this development coming in. We just haven't made all the improvements. Signalization, Heath and Jason were up talking about signalization. Uh, transition with the conditional use. Um, one of the last things that Mr. Moore had up was, you know, there was a statement that the office was being used as a transition. Absolutely correct. We were placing that office in there as a transition to the north and west. It also says in the comprehensive plan, and our zoning ordinances, that office and apartment are transitions. So we have apartment complex north, that is the transition. The lady mentioned eighty-four feet, that is our, that's our agreed-upon minimum standard for transitions. Um, so any other types of buffering and transitions, we'd like to make sure we take care of at the conditional use. Birmingham landscaping, should there be evergreen trees, how tall, what size, um, what the setback distance is, um, those types of things get handled at the next public hearing.
Jeff, thank you. Would anyone else at commission level have any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I have a question for Rick. Sorry, I don't know your last name. In regards to, um, the rezone of the office, the, um, one-point-two-acre site, uh, we talk about the parking lot. As it stands today, do you have enough parking to support the structure that you're looking at building at this time?
With the parking on the office, yes. Um, based on the, um, volume of traffic and sales and customers of a store of this size, we feel that, um, we need the parking on the office lot, yes. that we need the parking on the office lot, yes.
Rick, I'm glad they called you back up, and maybe you're not the right person to ask. This does seem a little out of the ordinary for Walmart. We typically think of a Walmart in a mall-type setting or being an anchor store for a large commercial venture. I happened to listen to the news probably about a month ago, and they talked about a project like this being approved in California, and what they were referring to as a neighborhood presence. And I'm sure you can't answer for that, but is this more of a bit of a trend for Walmart to maybe get away from the large complex-type commercial development and more of a neighborhood?
I don't know that I want to attempt to answer the trend, and that may be a better question for Brian Cutting, who is a real estate manager for Walmart. But I can say that Walmarts, and there were some examples mentioned tonight, of Walmarts that haven't developed in residential areas, but I can say that it isn't uncommon either for it to be essentially located in a similar adjacent uses.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, can't there, Danny, just standing there for a minute.
No, I'm sitting here thinking.
Would there be any other discussion?
Well, I think there's a lot of other items that were brought up tonight, other concerns that they have, and they really relate to the permitting process going forward. I think really, our focus here tonight really has to be on this O Office being zoned to recreational conservation and then to, from O Office institutional to C4. So I think there'll be plenty for further discussion.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jesse. In some of the public comments, they did understand our role and did understand that this is a process, so, you know, focusing on just the zoning aspect of the one acre and the two, yeah.
Any other comments? See, we have a motion, we've had a second. Item number 15, and all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Which means no.
Opposed, yes. Two, yes.
Mr. Chair, all in favor will raise their hand. All opposed? Motion passes 4 to 2. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Jesse said it, and she said it very well, we get it. We've had some good discussion tonight, hopefully some of your questions were answered. This is the start of a process.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
Adjourn this meeting?
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned.